Hello, city council welcomes you to its virtual city council meeting. There are two public forums set aside for public comment. One at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end. Madam City Clerk, do we comply with the amount of open meeting law?
Mayor, yes, we are in compliance.
Thank you. Tonight, we have the opportunity, once again, while we were virtual, we have Mayor Protem Barone, who's giving us a pledge, all in that will have a pledge against by Councilman Churchill. So please rise. Isaac, are you prepared?
I thought I already heard him log in.
Is he on the phone?
He logged in. I don't know if he's unmuted himself.
Why don't I just give a prayer, okay?
Yes.
Father in heaven, thank you so much for this opportunity to come together as residents within this beautiful community. Thank you so much for the opportunity we have to work with our residents, work with our business owners, and work with people who are trying to do their best in our community to make it better and safer for all, especially our police department and our party department. We're always pleased at work here. We might be inspired to do what our community needs to do, to watch over and bless this community and this leadership throughout the city and the citizens of Jesus Christ, the Lord and Savior. Senator Churchill?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Isaac, did you make it on the phone yet? Um, Madam City Clerk, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go until I get to the consent agenda and then let's see if we can find Isaac, okay?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Um, we're gonna move on to public forum. This is time set aside for comment on posted agenda items. This excludes discussion of public hearing items, which would be heard later separately. So if you want to speak on any items listed on the consent agenda, business or ordinance final action, now is that time. When I call upon you to speak, I request that you mention your comments in over three minutes so we can avoid repetition. Madam City Clerk, do we have any written comments or callers on the phone?
Mayor, we have no callers on the phone, but we did receive one letter from Michael Foods in opposition to item number twenty-four, which is the business impact statement regarding proposed ordinance thirty-three-six. Those are the only comments we received.
Great, item number twenty-four. All right, um, I'm just writing something down here real quick. Well, if there's nobody else that's phoned in and waiting to speak to us, I will close this public forum and we'll move forward. Moving on to the agenda.
Item number one, please council, let me begin September sixteenth, twenty twenty. Mayor, council staff, I can use the rule of the agenda published.
Thank you very much. Uh, council, we have, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move for approval of the agenda as published. This is Councilman Black.
Thank you very much. Lee, aye.
Councilman Black, yes.
Barone, aye. Oh, great. Churchill, yes.
Goins Brown, yes.
Great, wonderful. Isaac, thank you very much. All you did was miss a prayer and on the pledge of allegiance, okay? So.
See, that's God and country.
Oh, okay.
Oh, my God, I'm so sorry about that. I, I had trouble, I, I couldn't see because, uh, I forgot my glasses and I couldn't make out the numbers and here I was kind of panicking, but I'm on now. Thank you very much. I'm so sorry, Mayor. Please forgive me.
No, that's, no, you're perfect. We're just getting on to the business where we need your vote, one way or the other. So now we're moving on to the consent agenda.
Mayor, council, consent agenda, consent of I am two, two, four, is our recommendations to approve this.
Unless there's any comments or questions, the Chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve consent. This is Councilwoman Goins Brown.
Wonderful. We have a motion, all those, say aye, aye, Lee, aye.
Councilman Barone?
Barone, aye.
Councilman Black?
Uh, my vote is yes.
Councilman Churchill?
Yes.
Councilwoman Goins Brown?
I think we got messed up. Yeah. I think we got messed up. Isaac, you gotta be ready on this and here to be, all right? So we're just going aithetical order. Um, moving on to public hearing. Um, for those who wish to speak, may I call you up, speak, I request that, once again, we limit your comments in over three minutes and avoid repetition.
Item number thirteen, to that public hearing review, board of the working, which has homelessness that are clearly in exact and modify our recommendations within the report.
Thank you. I'll open up the public hearing and anybody would like to discuss this with the council at this time. Madam City Clerk, do we have any other comments or callers?
Mayor Lee, we have no written comments on this item and we have no callers on the line at this time.
Okay, great. Now I'll call for motion to approve the reports, recommendations.
Move for approval, Councilman Black.
Let me, let me close the public hearing. I, I gotta head myself. Close the public hearing. Now I ask you for the motion. Go ahead, Scott.
Uh, move for approval from Councilman Black.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote, vote, voice vote. Lee, aye. Barone, yes. Black, yes. Churchill, yes.
Goins Brown, yes.
Wonderful, great. Item is approved.
Mayor, council, item fourteen, approve CN oh four twenty twenty and pass and adopt ordinance number thirty twenty-six, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately twenty point four three plus minus acres in the zoning map of North Las Vegas, from a C two general commercial district to an R three multifamily residential district. CN oh four twenty twenty, Craig Road and Camino on Norte, for property located approximately six hundred and twenty-one feet north of Craig Road and west of Camino on Norte and providing for other matters, property related there, too.
Thank you very much, Director Jordan. Do we have a presentation on this, Catherine, or do you have a phone?
Yes.
A presentation?
Mayor Lee, yes, we have the applicant on the phone. I'll bring her in in just a second.
Okay.
Hello, caller, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, good afternoon, Jennifer Lazovich, nineteen eighty Festival Plaza Drive, here tonight representing the applicant. I'll keep it short and sweet. We appreciate both staff and planning commission recommending approval and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. That's the presentation. Open public hearing. Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody that would like to discuss this with the council?
We have no written comments and no callers on the line. Uh, just for the record, there were thirty-five notices mailed out and, um, two were in support and none were in opposition.
Thank you very much. Um, we'll close the public hearing and call for a motion to approve, pass the ordinance adoption, zero two six, Councilman Churchill.
Mayor, I'll be happy to approve, uh, item number fourteen, Z N zero four, there's twenty twenty, uh, ordinance number three zero two six.
Thank you very much. We have a motion. Council, please cast your vote. Lee, aye.
Barone, yes.
Black, yes. Churchill, yes.
Goins Brown, yes.
Thank you very much. We have unanimous decision. Item is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, item fifteen, approve AMP oh six twenty twenty, Azure and Novak for applicant Frank McCollum to request an amendment to the comprehensive plan to change the land use classification from employment to single-family medium on property located the southeast corner of Azure Avenue and Novak Street. APN one two three two nine two oh one zero zero five.
Thank you. Catherine, is there anybody that would like to give a presentation on this, on the phone?
There's no callers. We have received no written comment. We had three hundred and twenty notices, three in support and one opposed, but no caller on the line at this time.
Okay, and so item fifteen and sixteen are companions, so I'll go ahead and ask for a motion for this after we, you've closed the public hearing, probably, you've closed the public hearing. And so we'll make fifteen its own vote and then sixteen, so at this point in time, the Chair will take a motion to approve this item fifteen.
Yes, Mayor, um, this is Councilman Barone, and I would like to make the motion to approve this very worthy project in Ward one.
We have a motion. Council, please cast your vote. Lee, aye. Barone, yes. Black, yes. Churchill, yes.
Goins Brown, yes.
Unanimous, thank you very much. Item is approved.
Mayor, council, item sixteen, approve Z N ten twenty twenty and pass an adopt ordinance number thirty thirty-seven, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately six point three seven plus minus acres in the zoning map of North Las Vegas from an M two general industrial district to an R C L, single-family compact lot residential district. Z N ten twenty twenty, Azure and Novak, for property located at the southeast corner of Azure Avenue and Novak Street, providing for other matters, property related there, too.
Thank you very much. Uh, Catherine, is there somebody on the line for a presentation on this item?
Mayor, there are no more written comments and there's no one on the line.
Okay, so I'll open the public hearing. No one seems to be on the line, so we will close the public hearing and the Chair will call for a motion.
Yes, Mayor, um, I would like to also make a motion to approve this, uh, this matter.
We have a motion. Council, please cast your vote. Lee, aye. Barone, yes. Black, yes. Churchill, yes.
Goins Brown, yes.
It's unanimous, thank you very much. It's approved.
Mayor, council, item seventeen, approve AMP oh seven twenty twenty, Scott Robinson Apartments for applicant SRB Living LLC to request an amendment to the comprehensive plan to change the land use classification from mixed-use neighborhood to mixed-use commercial for property located at the northwest corner Corley Avenue and Scott Robinson Boulevard. APN one three nine oh four four one eight zero zero one.
Okay, so items seventeen and eighteen will have the same presentation, um, and so Catherine, is there anybody, I know you had three for support and five for opposition, is that correct?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, so at this point in time, is there anybody on the phone that would like to discuss this with the city council?
Yes, Mayor, I believe this is the applicant. I'll bring him in. Hello, state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you very much, uh, Your Honor, members of the council. My name's Bob Gronauer, nineteen eighty Festival Plaza Drive. Um, items seventeen and eighteen, uh, we have approximately eighteen acres of property right behind the, uh, existing Walmart and the property is currently zoned for commercial and master plan for commercial neighborhood. Uh, we are asking for the amendment to the master plan to be mixed-use commercial and zone change for R three. Uh, we did have two neighborhood meetings. Um, the first neighborhood meeting, we had a handful of people on the, uh, on a virtual meeting, um, and they expressed support with respect to the application that we had. And then we were required to have a, uh, second meeting and no one showed up, uh, to that meeting. Uh, we, uh, got staff's recommendation for approval for both items. We went to the planning commission meeting and nobody showed up, uh, in opposition. Um, we gave a presentation and the planning commission unanimously recommended approval. Uh, with that being said, I am here to answer any questions that you may have and, uh, in the near future, you'll be seeing, we'll be coming back with the, uh, site development plan review on the property, uh, as we move forward in this process.
Thank you very much. Catherine, do we have anybody from the public that would like to speak on this? I'll open the public hearing for them.
We have no written or callers on the line for this item.
Okay, so then we will close the public hearing. Council, any comments or questions on this item?
Um, Mayor, I'll, I'll, I'll speak to that item. Um, and I did participate in both of the neighborhood meetings and no one was in opposition of those. And just I recall as a council that we were looking at infill parcels throughout the city and it happened to be one of those infill parcels that commercial just would not pencil out on that particular plot of land. Um, I've been a project, have been, um, participated in neighborhood meetings. It's a very nicely quality, um, project. It's gated, all parking is onsite, so I am in support of this applicant's proposal. And so with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Any other comments or questions from the council, if not, we will add vote. Hearing done, we have a motion, please cast your vote. Lee, aye. Barone, aye. Black, aye. Churchill, yes.
Goins Brown, yes.
It's unanimous, item is approved.
Mayor, council, item eighteen, approve Z N oh five twenty twenty and pass an adopt ordinance number thirty thirty-four, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately eighteen point three nine plus minus acres from a C two general commercial district to an R three multifamily residential district. Z N oh five twenty twenty, Scott Robinson Apartments, property located at the northwest corner of Corley Avenue and Scott Robinson Boulevard and providing for other matters, property related there, too.
Thank you very much, Director Jordan. Um, is there anyone online, Catherine, who would like to give a presentation on this?
Uh, Your Honor, this is Bob Gronauer again. I'd like to incorporate.
Oh, I slipped, I, I slipped, yeah. Your, your post, your first comments will be included in this then. Catherine, is there anybody on public hearing that would like to speak on this?
No, Mayor.
I'll open the public hearing for them. No, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and the Chair will take the motion. This goes down.
Um, yeah, and my same comments for seventeen can go for eighteen as well, except that I'd like to make a motion to approve item eighteen.
Thank you very much. We have a motion. Council, please cast your vote. Lee, aye. Barone, yes. Black, yes. Churchill, yes.
Goins Brown, yes.
Item is unanimously approved.
Thank you very much. Take care.
Mayor, council, item nineteen, approve VAC oh five twenty twenty and Revere for applicant AMH Development LLC to vacate an approximate fifty-foot wide utility segment that commences at Ann Road generally two hundred and seventy-eight feet east of Revere Street and runs north approximately four hundred and sixty-two feet. APN one two four two seven four oh one zero zero one.
Thank you very much, Director. Uh, Catherine, do we have anybody on the phone that would like to make a presentation on this?
Um, I have a caller, Mayor, but I don't know if it's the applicant or not. I'll bring the person in. Hello, caller, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jeffrey Armstrong, address twenty-seven twenty-seven South Rainville Boulevard, representing the applicant.
Okay, Jeffrey, so do you have any presentation you want to add to this or are you okay with just having her in?
No, we concur with staff recommendations and respectfully request your approval. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm gonna open up the public hearing, Catherine. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this on the phone right now?
Mayor, we have no callers. We, we sent out notices, we had three in support and two in opposition.
Thank you very much. Then I will close the public hearing and call for a motion. Councilman Churchill.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'll be happy to go ahead and make a motion to approve, uh, uh, VAC zero six twenty twenty.
We have a motion, council, please cast your vote. Lee, aye. Barone, yes. Black, yes. Churchill, yes.
Goins Brown, yes.
It's unanimous, Mr. Armstrong, congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. You have a nice day.
You too.
Mayor, council, item twenty, approve VAC oh six twenty twenty, Range and Tropical for applicant Southwest Land Development LLC to vacate an approximate thirty-foot wide remnant of the Nellis Boulevard right away that commences at Range Road and runs south approximately seven hundred and eighty-one feet. APN one two three two nine six oh one zero zero three.
Thank you very much. Uh, Catherine, do we have anybody that would like to give a presentation on this?
Yes, I have the applicant.
Barone, yes. Black, yes. Churchill, yes.
Hello, caller, state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Ed Tanny with Tanny Engineering at sixty thirty South Jones Boulevard.
Welcome. Uh, did you have a presentation you wanted to get to this or just let the heading speak to you?
Yeah, well, it's, um, I'm, you know, here on behalf of the, um, the applicant, uh, on behalf of the owner, and, uh, we just concur with staff's recommendation for approval on the vacation.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Catherine, I'm gonna open this up to public hearing. Do you have anybody that would like to speak on this?
No, Mayor, I do not.
Okay, no other comments. Um, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and at this time, the Chair will call for a motion. Councilman Barone?
Yes, sir, thank you very much, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve. We have a motion to approve, uh, Chair will call for a motion. The Chair's not, the motion probably, the Chair was thinking about something else at the moment, but, um, Lee, aye. Barone, uh, aye. Black, yes.
Churchill, yes.
Goins Brown, yes.
Thank you. It's unanimous, uh, and it's approved. Thank you very much, Ed, for coming. We'll be here.
Mayor, council, item twenty-one, approve Z N oh eight twenty twenty and pass an adopt ordinance number thirty thirty-five, ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately eight point zero eight plus minus acres from an NPC R Z thirteen master planned community residential up to thirteen D U slash A Z district to NPC C one master planned community neighborhood commercial district. Z N oh eight twenty twenty Valley Vista Constant Care for property generally located
the northeast corner of Decatur Boulevard and Elkhorn Road and providing for other matters, property related there, too.
Thank you very much, Director. Um, Catherine, do we have anybody who wants to give a presentation on this item?
Um, we have the applicant and we noted that we have, uh, two, uh, recur notices in support and eleven in opposition, and I'll bring the applicant in.
Have people who sent the, uh, the paper, the over three hundred or?
There were, uh, two hundred and thirty-two notices with two in support and eleven in opposition. Caller, are you on the line?
Yes.
There we go.
Uh, Eric Ritz, thirty-two oh three East Warm Springs Street four hundred, Las Vegas, eight nine one two zero, resent, resent the applicant. And I have nothing really to add to the presentation. Look forward to your approval.
Thank you very much. Um, we'll open this up to public hearing, Catherine. Do you have anybody that would like to speak on this item?
We have no one calling for item twenty-one.
Okay, so we'll take the written comments, according to the minutes, and since there's no one here to speak, we close the public hearing and I'll call on Councilman Black.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. Uh, this, this parcel is on the southwest corner of the Valley Vista Master Plan Community and it's immediately to the north across the street from the B and B. The B and B is a commercial corner there at Decatur and Elkhorn and receives, I believe the number is three to five thousand people, uh, visits per day, I believe is the number. I think it's closer to three thousand, but high-traffic, commercial area there. Um, the eight acres across the street, I think is a, a very appropriate place for a, uh, medical facility. We, in North Las Vegas, we have one freestanding hospital. We have over two hundred and fifty-eight thousand residents. We do have some of the, uh, the more, uh, the, the regional emergency room, um, facilities, but I think this is an asset to our community. Even though there were eleven people in opposition, um, I looked at those, those cards and, uh, nine of them, uh, don't even live in North Las Vegas, they live on the, the west side of Decatur, which is Las Vegas Ward six. I think those individuals will be serviced by this facility as well as the, uh, twenty-seven hundred plus or minus homes in Valley Vista and then the areas north. So I think it's a great use, um, I support it and I think it's gonna bring value to our community and adding more resources for medical care.
Thank you very much. We take that as form of motion. My motion is to approve, yes. We have a motion, council, please cast your vote. Lee, aye. Barone, aye. Black, aye.
And I can go to the medical care to get that fixed.
Churchill, yes.
Goins Brown, yes.
It's unanimous, item is approved.
Thank you very much. [inaudible].
Mayor, council, item twenty-two, approve Z N oh nine twenty twenty and pass an adopt ordinance number thirty thirty-six, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately nine point four seven plus or minus acres from an OL, open land district to M two general industrial district. Z N oh nine twenty twenty, Sloan and Howdy Wells, for property generally located at the northeast corner of Howdy Wells Avenue and Sloan Lane and providing for other matters, property related there, too.
Thank you. Catherine, do we have anybody on the phone that would like to give a presentation on item twenty-two?
Um, we have two individuals, I think. One is an owner, one is applicant. I'll bring the first person in.
Okay, thank you.
And have an adopt ordinance number thirty-six, an ordinance related to zoning.
Hello, caller. State your name for the record.
Scott Mary with the DE Development.
Hello. Can we start over? I think there was a little cross talk. Who is this?
Hi, this, this is Scott Mary with the DE Development, representing the applicant.
Okay, go ahead, Phil.
Thank you. Address twelve sixty-one Prospect Street, La Jolla, San Diego. Um, Ed Tanny is our civil engineer. I thought maybe he would be on the phone before me, but, um, I'm here to answer any questions and I just want to, uh, ask for your support of this, uh, adoption of the, the rezone and I want to say what a breath of fresh air it's been to work in the city of North Las Vegas. It's been very business-friendly, very professional and experienced staff and we ask for your support and approval and look forward to doing other projects here as well.
Scott, you're doing good so far. Let's see if Ed doesn't run it for you. Do you want to put Ed on the phone, Catherine?
Yes, I can, Mayor. Hello, caller, state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Ed Tanny with Tanny Engineering at sixty thirty South Jones.
Welcome, Ed. Do we have anything you'd like to offer this?
No, just that we concur with staff's recommendations and, uh, thank you for the, the support of the application.
That's great. Scott did a great job for us, too. So I'm gonna open the public hearing. Catherine, do we have anybody who would like to speak to this item on public hearing?
Mayor, we do not have any other callers. We just, uh, have three letters in support and none in opposition to this, um, project.
We'll put that into the minutes and we will close the public hearing. Uh, Councilman Barone?
Yes, Mayor. Um, well, you know, I, I'm always happy to see, uh, progress in this area. You know, it's fantastic commercial land and, um, of course, you know, I, I'm very, I'm, I'm sitting here almost quivering with, uh, with anticipation to, uh, see, uh, what is, what addition is, you know, uh, is gonna come to the North Las Vegas family and of course, I'm very happy to hear that the applicant is, uh, very much, uh, happy with the level of customer care and hopefully, uh, they tell their brand and pretty soon will open up some other open land into, uh, commercial land, I'm sorry, uh, um, industrial land. And with that, I'd like to make a, a very enthusiastic motion to approve.
Thank you very much. Council, we have a motion. Councilman Barone, go ahead and take the vote. Lee, aye. Barone, aye. Black, yes. Churchill, yes.
Goins Brown, yes.
Item passes unanimously. Councilman Barone, do you want to have your own city council meetings in the future? Like eighty percent of it has been in your district, so congratulations, you know? Well, moving on, moving on to business. Thank you.
Item number twenty-three, adopt business impact statement regarding ordinance number two zero thirty-eight, which is made in chapter thirteen point two four, be approved by statute and reset to M O C road sewer connection fee for customers connecting to M O C road to sanitary sewer upstream from the intersection of Road two and Road.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager. Would you call for a motion to approve the business impact statement?
Uh, may I just, uh, come from Barone, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Lee, aye.
Barone, aye. Black, aye.
Churchill, yes.
Goins Brown, yes.
It's unanimous, item is approved.
Item number twenty-four, adopt business impact statement regarding ordinance number forty thirty-nine, which is in chapter thirteen, twenty-two, again, in North Las Vegas, be approved by statute, waste water restrictions, through the upstream, be charged, waste treatment, and the last six, waste water restrictions, section thirteen dot two eight dot four.
Catherine, you had one letter that goes in the, uh, in the matter of opposition, is that correct?
Yes, yes, Mayor.
I forget the company, but anyway, um...
It was Michael Foods.
Okay, there we go. Appreciate you. Okay, there we go. Appreciate you. Tom, did you want to take a second on that?
Certainly. This is Tom Brady, Utilities Director. I did want to mention that we did address the comments that the Farm Fresh Foods or Michael Foods representing Farm Fresh had. Their concern was that the implementation of this surcharge was going to have a detrimental effect to their business operations. However, we responded that this is a, a fee recovery process and our ordinance currently has surcharges included in the ordinance for recovering these costs. And this is basically the cost to treat the wastewater that they are creating. They have high BODs as well as high phosphorus discharges. And although we understand the impact to their business operations, the fact that they are putting this into the wastewater that we have to treat at the water reclamation facility, there is a cost associated with that. And so we are returning that cost to the creators, if you will. And so although this is an impact, this is an industry standard and is currently in the regulations for both the Water Reclamation District and the City of Henderson and the City of Las Vegas. So at, at that, it stands. If you have any other questions, I'm, I'm more than happy to elaborate.
Counsel, any comments or questions, Director Brady? Hearing done. Tom, I think the chair will call for a motion to approve the business impact statement and authorize City Manager to certify the information.
Mayor, this is, yes, this is Councilman Black. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the business impact statement regarding ordinance number 3039.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Lee, aye. Barone, yes. Black, yes. Churchill, yes.
Going Brown, yes.
Items approved. Thank you very much, Director Brady. Moving on to ordinances, final action.
Mayor, counsel, item 25, pass an adopt ordinance number 3019, amending Title V of the Municipal Code related to liquor regulations and licenses by amending chapter 5.26 liquor regulations and licenses and providing for other matters property related there, too.
Did you want to just give us a quick, on, on the record, presentation about this?
Yes, Mayor, I can do that. The proposed ordinance is, is again bringing in some additional liquor regulations. Specifically, it's adopting definitions and some procedures for brew pubs, breweries, craft distilleries, estate distilleries, instructional wine making and, actually, and instructional wine making. Currently, we're the only jurisdiction in the valley that doesn't actually have anything in our business license regulations regarding these types of uses. And so we're, we're proposing this language to align ourselves with the, with the other jurisdictions. And what caused us to notice this is not long ago before the planning commission, we had a special use permit go before them for a brewery and, which was supported by staff and supported by the planning commission. And it was at that point that we realized we really don't have any regulations that actually govern these types of uses. And so Mary Aldaba, Business License Manager, did the research and is proposing these requirements to be able to license these types of uses and also to be able to encourage these other types of uses to be able to come into the city.
Thank you very much. Counsel, do you have any questions for, for, for Jordan? Not Counselor Churchill.
Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve, uh, item number 25, ordinance number 3019. We have a motion, counsel. Please cast your vote. Lee, aye. Barone, aye. Black, yes.
Churchill, yes.
Going Brown, yes.
Thank you very much. It's unanimous. Item is approved. Moving on to the city managers' report.
Mayor, I'm, 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 the first one is, um, I'd like, Mayor, counsel, to know that, about, just to be precise, about the emergency directives that have been signed. Since the beginning of this pandemic, the governor's issued 31 different declarations of emergency directives. These are enforced by the city of North Las Vegas within our jurisdiction. During a state emergency in the city, um, it authorized the city manager to sign emergency directives so that the city can enforce the governor's orders. If you recall, the first directive that I signed concerned the closing of non-essential businesses. And the second directive was specific to the state's covering, coverings directive from the governor. On Thursday, last Thursday, I signed emergency directive number 3 that stipulates the fines and penalties for violating any of the previous state directives. This third directive brings us up to speed with our efforts to support the Carr County Regional COVID Recovery Enforcement Committee. And Carr County confirmed that as a region, you have to inspect 750 businesses per day. This averages out to 60, 750 businesses per week. This averages out to 60 businesses per day or 420 per week for us. Our staff has responded to this quickly in an effort to be in compliance. And we have even brought on some temporary workers subcontracted to assist with new inspections to ensure we hit the weekly numbers as requested by, by Carr County. You guys will all see, council, see this directive. It will be on October 7th agenda for ratification. We didn't, we weren't able to get it to you all in time, but we need to sign in order to be in compliance with the rest of the state. Um, the second item, there's been lots of questions on virtual meetings. We need to talk to, you know, a little bit about the beginning of the meeting, how much longer it's going to be. As the chair of the Southern Health District, I've asked Councilman Black to talk with the health district about this in the next few days just to get some guidance from them. They're still meeting virtually. You know, as you all remember, we went back to live meetings and then we went back to virtual. So we just kind of want to make sure we get it right. We get some concern from FD that there's going to be, the, the impact of flu season and what it could mean. So we just want to make sure that we get it right. Hope people will kind of remain patient with us. And we are looking to the health district for some guidance on, on what to do. I don't, I know the jurisdictions are all doing different things, but we're trying to base, base our decision on what we hear from the scientists and what we need. They're tasked with protecting us all. Third thing I have is, I don't know if you all know, that Councilman Black completed another revolution around the sun today. He's now done it 50 times. He's 50 years old today. It's his birthday.
Oh, wow. That's right. He's only 50. Did you look at his, oh, I'm sorry. This is. Congratulations, Scott. The city manager added you.
Hey, thanks, Mr. City Manager.
You're welcome, Ed.
I know a lot of people your age, Scott, that wish they were in great shape as you are. Congratulations. Is that the end of your report?
We've heard for, for any questions or comments that any of the things that want to bring to you today.
And so that's a, you see the manager's report. We appreciate that. And I, I'm going to take a second and say you are working very, very hard for us. I know all last night you put that letter on the city's agenda. We can't work with the state. Councilman, he was jumping with the health department through all kinds of hoops for us. Anybody on this call that's on a committee is so active on this and such, holds such leadership positions. We're just proud of you here. So anyway, that's another great report. Moving on to the public forum. Now's the time for the public to speak on issues not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Remember, counsel, they hear you guys, but they not, they may not take action tonight upon any items raised during the public forum. So Catherine, do we have any other callers or written comments that need to be addressed at this time?
Mayor, we have none.
Thank you very much. So then we will close the public forum. And once again, we appreciate you. I can't wait till we can meet again. I will follow the city managers and, uh, advice and we'll hold on as long after, but it would be nice to be at the public aspect together again. So this meeting is adjourned.